Good evening supervisors and members of the public. Welcome to the September 2nd, 2025 Public Meeting of the Board of Supervisors Lower Paxton Township. On tonight's agenda, we have some action to approve an application, I'm sorry, a payment application for the Centennial Acres and Cole Park Memorial Park Improvement Project. We also have action to authorize Ordinance 2506, which is authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond for a sewer project. And also preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for Gateway Lot 16, and improvement guarantees related to subdivision and land development. And finally, a payment of our bills. Supervisors are all in their place and ready to conduct business. Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Manager Vernau. Welcome everybody to the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors Business Meeting for September 2nd, 2025. It is now 7:06 and I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Najim.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick note to advise to everybody that we did hold an executive session prior to our meeting at 6:30 to discuss personnel issues. The next item on the agenda, item number four, the approval of the meeting minutes. For June 10th, the workshop meeting, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment, discussion, questions on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. Please identify yourself by name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, please. I'll raise my hand at the five minute mark. Thank you, Mr. Clare.
Jeff Clare, 2648 Amanda Drive. I guess it's two points. The first one is, we're a few months away from the celebration of America 250. And when I went to the township website, I didn't see any activities listed. I would like to know, A, if you applied for the state grant, and B, if township's planning any activities for PA 250.
Thank you, Mr. Clare. I do believe I saw some correspondence through Director Scott's office that she is planning to apply for grants for the celebration next year.
And the other part to that is, when I went to the township website, many of the links were broken and outdated. And I know that township has been working two years to refurbish that website, and it seems to me a little bit long to get something like that to work.
Okay. We'll take a look. I didn't notice that they were broken. Thank you for letting us know. We'll check in. Thank you, Mr. Clare. Mr. Kessler.
Yes, I'd like to just come up. Good evening. Eric Kessler, Running Pump Farm, Lingustown. What I put in front of you, and it's more of a question. When I was on the Lingustown Committee some years ago, when we were working on revitalizing Lingustown, roundabout, so forth, there are two alleyways. One is in yellow, which is Blackberry. And then the other alley, they all run parallel to Lingustown Road. The other alley is Raspberry. My question is this. We had asked for a legal opinion. We never got a legal opinion. Are those alleyways completely, are they public or are they private? Now, with Blackberry, I'd say three quarters is paved. The unpaved portion, which neighbors help do maintenance, we shouldn't be doing. That township should. But my question is, I think the township should give the citizens a ruling. Are those alleys public or are they private? That's all I'm asking for. And I don't expect it tonight, but if you could please get back to me, I very much appreciate it.
Mr. Kessler, when did you ask for the first legal opinion, so we can follow up?
Eighteen years ago.
Okay.
To be honest. So, I think some of you were just in high school then, I'm sorry to say. But it does affect the properties that are on either side of the alley. It does affect the maintenance, the snow removal. So, I'd really like to have an opinion from the board. I don't need a legal opinion, but if that's the way you want to go, fine. I just think someone has to take their head out of the sand and take a position. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. We'll look into that. Appreciate it. Mr. Minsker, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the board, staff, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Minsker, 5956 Lingustown Road in the square in Lingustown. My project number seven of the 10 that I have been introducing to you is lying in front of you for your blue notebooks. This is a resurrection project going back a little bit further than 18 years. This is going back about 40 years. This project is along the same vein as the other ones I've introduced you to so far. Just to remind you, these projects are designed to give recognition to our board and staff in a positive way, and also do some positive things for the public. I remind you also that the 10th project, which I'll introduce to you on October the 21st, will bring together all the other nine, as far as procedure in which to research these and possibly bring these into existence. This project number seven, as I mentioned, goes back about four decades, when Lower Paxton Township Lions Club, under suggestion that I had given them, created a project to bring together a number of township organizations to create a welcome sign to place along our main highways, welcoming people into Lower Paxton Township. That sign was eventually erected about 40 years ago at the east entrance of Lower Paxton Township on the Route 22 expressway coming into the township from West Sanover Township. It lasted for about five years, until Mother Nature got the best of it. It fell apart, and nothing has been done since. About three years ago, as you'll notice on the front page of your four-page document today, Brad Gutchaugh had asked me to do some research on resurrecting that project to bring some attention to our township as people enter the township. I did that research. I presented to him the two items that are over there by the wall that I call your attention to. The idea being that a large permanent Mason-type sign would be erected at six different locations. These are shown in your packet on pages two, three, and four, at the entrances, east and west, to Lingustown Road, Route 22, and Union Deposit Road, all resurrected, all erected onto right-of-way land. The original sign, as you see, sort of an indication of it over there, involved getting eight community organizations to work together on this project, which I really love to do. A good example of that was this past Saturday, when Rotary, Quanis, and Lions got together to beautify the square. And I like to do these kinds of projects. This project would be of that nature, where at least eight different organizations, these are the ones that participated 40 years ago, would go together to help finance the erection of these six signs. Each of the organizations would have a disc the size of what you see to the right, that's just a sample, that would be at the base of the sign, advertising some of the community organizations that are the positive things that make our township the great township that it is. Two would be veterans organizations, two would, three would be fire companies, and three would be service organizations, Lions, Rotary, and Quanis. Each of these organizations would donate the cost of their sign, which that disc will cost about $50. So, as far as financing the six signs, for each of the signs, there would be approximately $300 that would come from, $400 that would come from the proceeds for each of the discs on each of the six signs. On your paper, I have on the front the locations of where these signs would go, and then on pages two, three, and four, I have photographs that show you approximately where the township line is and where those signs would be located. As I mentioned earlier, on October 21st, I will be, with my 10th project, I will be giving you a procedure in which to study and hopefully bring about the implementation of these nine projects, of which this is project number seven. And at that point, hopefully, we will be able to move forward and do something about these. The ideas of these projects are they are dynamic, daring, and doable. And I encourage you to give serious thought to them, and we will talk more about that in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minsker.
Are there questions?
Questions from the board?
No.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Bostick, please.
My name is Bill Bostick, 6204 Elmer Avenue in Lingustown. Just want to share a couple things related to the roundabout issue that we've been working on as a community through Lingustown Gazette's Facebook page. And what I have to share, just an overview of an eight-point process that could be considered, as far as eight issues, in terms of addressing it. I would imagine most of them are probably in the works, but in the event that there's something new here, I wanted to put this into the mix. Just, and what I'll do is send it out via email to you individually, and also to staff, instead of trying to hand out paper tonight. It's just an overview. The first one is just to install warning signs on major routes, which I, right now, there are none in terms of what's happening on 39 and North Mountain Road in Lingustown. Install detour signs with flashing LEDs, which would represent or show truckers the bypass around Lingustown, the route to take. There's none of those at the moment. Next would be to investigate oversized load permits, which some of our readers have verified that they've actually seen the permits issued by PennDOT to take oversized loads through Lingustown. That's actually happening, and it's been verified. I know it's been discussed here in this setting about increasing police patrols and developing an ordinance that would allow our local police to find and maybe assess charges if they can verify that a particular trucker caused some concrete damage or other damages. One thing I just briefly mentioned, or talked with Mr. Kashiba about, is explore surveillance solutions, which include cameras in the roundabout in the square, along with license plate readers. Two more, establish local delivery exceptions. I don't know if they're in place or not. I didn't explore that, but certainly we need some way of determining what tractor-trailers can get in the village without being fined with local deliveries. The only one that there may be some disagreement on in the room, I think, would be, you know, based on my investigation, I would really encourage the township to work with PennDOT to take a look at the roundabouts, the roundabout in the square and the concrete island. And the reason I say that, there's clearly a couple different movements that truckers take that it's difficult for them to get through the square. They are, if they're on North Mountain Road, heading into the roundabout, and they want to go west on 39, that's a very difficult turn for them to make. And that's why you have so much damage on the north side of the island. The other is if they're coming westbound on 39 and they hit the roundabout, when they want to try and make the big turn into North Mountain Road, that's where numerous tractor-trailers run up into the vegetation, because that particular movement is very difficult. A couple thoughts on, just in terms of where we're at right now. You know, personally, I don't know which trucks get in there that are legal and which ones aren't. The signs that PennDOT has up there where it talks about number of inches, number of feet, I haven't been able to interpret that yet. I'm still trying to get in touch with the Pennsylvania Motor Truck Association and see if they might be able to help me out. So, we don't really know how many are illegal trucks, how many are legal trucks that are causing the damage. We really don't know. And I think no matter what we do, occasionally, there's going to be truckers get in there, and if we don't have that roundabout right, we're going to continue to have damage. The other thought I have on this is that the planning for this roundabout took place, I mean, it's been in place and using, we've been using it for 14 years. So, the planning took place 15, 16, 17 years ago. Right at the beginning of PennDOT's run with roundabouts, they do them regularly right now. So, that's a long time from the one and, the two in Lingustown were designed to today. And the simulations they've used with computers, maybe some of the standards that were in place at that time are not appropriate, given the usage that we've seen and the damage. It's not just the island. We're talking about the curbing and everything else. It's, if you actually go out there and look, it's like, there's just a lot of damage, concrete damage throughout that, especially in the square. And just to wrap up then, those are the eight, and I'll, again, I'll get that out to you. If, during your reports, if someone might address, from the township's perspective, what you're doing, and what are some of the next steps you're going to take, if you know them at this point? And the last thing is, I know you had a budget workshop at 5:30. I don't think it was televised. I took a look. I'm not sure if it was, and I didn't see it on YouTube. But if someone on the dais could just overview what you discussed, the key points, just a couple key points, so as a reporter, I have an idea, and the public would have an idea what you talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. On the roundabout, I know Supervisor Najim had been working to meet with officials from PennDOT. Supervisor Najim, I'm not sure if you have any update yet at this point.
Yeah, so, we have set a meeting with PennDOT leadership to be held on September 16th. So, we're going to try to see if, you know, how many we can fit in the room to, you know, see how many people from the public we can, we can take. But yeah, it's been set. Absolutely.
Where's the meeting?
It will be here.
Here?
Okay.
And then, Mr. Bostick, to address your other point, we can follow up with you after the meeting and provide you with a presentation that was prepared and delivered during the budget workshop. Thank you. Mrs. Lindsay.
Robin Lindsay, 6244, overview. In reference to the alleys in Lingustown, they are private. The township does not take care of alleys, even in a TND, traditional neighborhood development. The HOA is responsible to take care of the alleys.
Thank you. Is there any other public, please, sir?
I just want to give my two cents. I had chaired the committee when we did the Lingustown Restoration, Renovation, some 15, 16 years ago. That committee worked with PennDOT, we had our own engineers, we had traffic engineers, and many, many traffic analysis reports. You know what I'm talking about, John. That roundabout was designed to slow traffic down, not to be easy for oversized vehicles. That's the whole point of it. The oversized vehicles do not belong through Lingustown. What I've been reading is people want something redesigned. It's like when a bank gets robbed three times, but the robbers have to get through the door. So, you remove the door to make it easy to violate. That's stupid. The answer is, better signage. Currently, all the signage says 54 foot in length max. I don't believe it says except for local deliveries, and I think that rider should be added. What I'm going to ask, I know, Mr. Kashiba, you're meeting with PennDOT, can you reduce that size to, say, 40 foot or whatever is logical in PennDOT standards? If that's done, that will resolve the issues. The other issue nationwide is we have CDL drivers that aren't legit and can't drive. And the only way to deal with them is to lock them up. And if you do enough traffic stops, if they're not certified, you seize the vehicle. That's it. So, that's the purpose and the reason why the roundabouts were made that size, let alone we had an impedance of, we couldn't go beyond. Currently, I have all the blueprints. They're 160 foot in diameter. That is right in the middle of the single-lane, low-speed roundabout specs for PennDOT. So, you're right on there. And the accident statistics, or lack of, will show you that they are doing their job. And as far, as far as the alleys, that same committee had asked that question many times, they public, they private. And even the, even counsel at the time said, "I couldn't tell you." So, I'm just asking if you were to look at it, because if they're private, for example, you can't do traffic enforcement. If they're public, can someone put a land development plan to develop something on the alley? So, it does affect many, many things, including law enforcement and people's use of their property. So, I'd appreciate a response in writing or something made publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Yes, sir, please.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for letting me speak. I don't live in a township.
Can you please state your name and address, please?
Okay. My name is Sean. I don't live in a township, but I was told I can come to the meeting. I live in Pembroke with the rest of them crazy people. And the comments I have is for Lower Paxton. I actually was thinking about moving out here, but there's a lot, a lot of things bother me. I heard you say, "We only got five minutes to talk," because I got five hours of stuff here, so I'm going to go as fast as I can. And I'm sorry, I said that like that. The first thing that bothers me, it's not the police officer's fault. If somebody in your township or your office can go to our state lawmakers, because I'm not wasting my time with them no more, we are in danger. Somebody needs to start enforcing these laws. These teenagers and these juveniles nowadays need their butts whipped. Okay? I'm tired of slapping on the wrist and going home to your mom, "We ain't going to do nothing but fix you with some pancakes or something." Okay? In your township, the stuff that goes on in here, I wouldn't put up with it.
Mr. Sean, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name.
Chapman, C-H-A-T-M-A-N.
Thank you. Could you please be specific about matters that occur in the township?
Okay, I was just getting ready to say that.
Thank you.
The mess that y'all go through at Coons Park is unacceptable. Now, I'm right back to what I just said. These kids know they can get away with so much. They need to have it that, if you're going to act like an adult, you're going to get treated like an adult. Somebody needs to speak to our lawmakers, okay? Stop these itty-bitties juvenile courts and going to jail for 20 seconds and all that mess. Stuff like that, if it was up to me, you go to jail for 10 years, and you've been in probation for five years. That's me. Okay? Again, it's not the police officer's fault. It's whoever makes these silly laws that we've had, that we always run into. The clown acts that y'all had at the fireworks, the same thing. Okay? It don't make no sense that we have to live like that. And it's getting worse, if you watch the news like I do. We got teenagers, juveniles, whatever you call them, walking around here with guns. That is unacceptable. Every time I hear that, again, I want to come out here and live, but I say, "I'm going right back into the ghetto where I came from." Unacceptable. Somebody needs to put their foot down. One second thing is, I agree with the man that was just standing up here. I've done infrastructure construction. I have a CDL as a truck driver. I agree with everything he said, so I don't have to bring up those comments. Okay? I like whoever did this, I don't know who it was. I stopped by your football game Friday. I guess it was against Cedar Cliff. I should know that, I'm a sports guy. I just wanted to clarify something, okay? I like whoever stated that, I guess if you're up to ninth grade, you got to have a pass to get in or something. I don't understand it. But the thing that bothered me about that, no, not the ninth grade. You need to take that higher and go to the 12th grade. Because the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, they're the ones that's causing all these problems. Not the little ninth graders. This part, and it's more on the police part, again, not blaming nothing on them. If I was to move out here, I would be scared, because the traffic out here, the disobedience, is sickening. I spent a lot of time, just a day, in your area, and that's almost every day. And it's worse when I talk to people in Lower Paxton Township, I know more than they do. I have a membership right over here at the Y, which would be the Friendship Center. I have a membership at the Shiny Shell Car Wash. I'm always in Bosco's. I shop mostly at Giant. I know about Lower Paxton. I'm just sick of hearing this idiotic stuff when I want to move in here. Somebody needs to step up here. Okay? Again, I'm not blaming it all on the police. I know they can't be everywhere all the time. Since I brought the Friendship Center up, one thing that irritates me, and this is all over, I just get tired of walking around, I don't even have a word for this. I get tired of people parking in handicap without a permit. Okay? That stupid law they have now, $250, I'll pay that for you. Or get the car towed, and you never caught a tow truck anyway. Try my game. I'm a sports guy. I play sports. Like, try it my way one time. You do that, or you're definitely getting your car towed. That $250 silly dollar fine that they have, I'm going to take it to $1,000, and guess what? Here's where people get mad at me. I'm going to suspend your license for a whole year, and I'll do that again. Also, I walk around. I saw this five times just today. These people driving around with inspection stickers that expire five years ago, two years ago, is off this planet. Okay? If it's beyond six months, the vehicle should be impounded. I just get tired of seeing that. Okay? How many times am I seeing this? Again, I'm not blaming nothing on the police. I'm getting tired of seeing people driving around school buses with the stop sign out, the flashing red lights. That silly law they have now is not working. You're going to jail immediately. And I want a five-year license suspension and a $5,000 fine. Again, I want to move out here. I just keep seeing this stuff every day I come out here. Every day. But these kids, like I said, they need to be treated like an adult. I don't want to, I'm sorry for sounding mean, but I'm sick of it. Because I don't see nobody, our lawmakers, I ain't got time for them no more. If I had anything to do with this township, you ain't seen nothing yet. Again, I still want to move out here. Okay? I would like some of this stuff to start being taken care of. And I used to do heavy highway construction. Again, I know, Laura, you said in a couple minutes, I drew some, I don't know who wants it, some pictures of some of y'all roads that need to be fixed. I mean, seriously fixed.
Would you like to bring those up to us, please? And thank you, Mr. Chapman. And thankfully, we have Director Kashiba here, who, he's the director of our Public Safety Department, and he's heard your concerns, so we appreciate them.
(Audio cut off).
Are these items that we can keep or make copies of? Okay, thank you.
(Audio cut off).
Wonderful.
(Audio cut off).
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
(Audio cut off).
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Ms. Schib.
Mr. Chapman here. It's a hard act to follow.
Oh, I'm a telephone.
You'll be welcome to Lower Paxton.
I'm a telephone.
I can tell.
I am a telephone.
I can tell. I've inspected cars.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
My name is Kate Schib. I live at 1-
Mr. Chapman here, it's a hard act to follow.
Oh, I'm a telephone.
You'll be welcome to Lower Paxton.
I'm a telephone.
I can tell.
I am a telephone.
I can tell. I've inspected cars.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
My name is Kate Scheib. I live at 131 Oak Park Road here in Lower Paxton. That was some real-life stuff. So this is a little more procedural stuff that I like to talk about. What I'd like to talk about tonight is the discussion that's going on here in Lower Paxton regarding an Economic Development Authority. I've had plenty of folks coming up asking me for my opinion regarding an Economic Development Authority, because I have some background in finance, plus, of course, I'm running for supervisor. And I didn't think a whole lot of it until I heard Chair Kurtz respond to Mr. Campbell in a way that seemed to be advocating for the development of an EDA. So since I've been offering my comments to others, I'm going to offer my comments tonight to go into the public record, and I'm going to talk about why Lower Paxton Township should not create an Economic Development Authority before an election. Creating an Economic Development Authority, also known as an EDA, is a major decision with long-lasting effects. Doing so within 60 days of an election, especially when a majority of the board of supervisors may change, raises serious concerns. First, it undermines democracy. Voters deserve to have their newly-elected representatives weigh in on a permanent decision. Second, authorities are not temporary. People seem to think that if you establish an authority, a new board could easily dismiss it. That is not accurate. Once formed, an Economic Development Authority has broad powers. It issues bonds, can acquire land, and it enters into long-term agreements. Board members cannot be easily removed. They serve for five-year staggered terms and can only be removed for cause by a court. And I'll be glad to defer. Get it? It also ties the hands of the new board. Outgoing supervisors should not lock in policies and appointments that bind incoming officials. Trust matters. I don't think the township or anyone wants to see major decisions that lock in anyone made in the 11th hour, because, again, we are going into an election within 60 days, 63 days. And finally, this isn't saying an EDA is good or not good, but developing an EDA can certainly wait until January. If it's a great idea, it can be discussed, deliberated, and voted on once a new board is seated, regardless of who's in those seats. So I'm just kindly asking the board to please respect the will of the voters and wait until after the election to discuss, let alone decide, the establishment of an Economic Development Authority. As a resident, I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you. And please, Ms. Kurtz, I know that you are professionally more into EDAs than I may know.
No, I respect your opinion, Ms. Scheib.
Thank you.
I think it's a valid one, that important decisions are made by elected officials. I think some of the comments that you made, I'm not sure what statute you're referring to in terms of creating an Economic Development Authority, but the statute that I was recommending that we would create an authority under, the township would have to approve all issuance of bonds or any long-term agreements, so that would be a board role. And the board members can be removed with or without cause. So we can certainly discuss what authority you're referring to, but that's not the Economic Development Authority that I was suggesting under the Economic Development Financing Authority.
I get it, and I also defer to the fact that there are various ways you can establish an authority, and some are more easily changed than others. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And on that topic, I do think it might be on the agenda next week, just as a discussion item for the workshop. Again, no action being taken. Okay? Is there any? Mr. Miller, please.
William Miller, 4311 Crestview. In response to Mr. Claire, the New Side Cemetery project is for the 250th. So David Doyle and Jay Purdy, they'd be the ones to talk to. I don't know of the other projects, but I know that something is afoot, and it was one of the supervisors that had gone to Mr. Doyle about this. I just, I don't know all the details. I'm the worker guy, so. In response to Eric, that Raspberry Lane, you know, I've lived out here since 1955. We went down that alley to get sawdust. There was a sawmill at the end of that by the firehouse. It fell over probably 10 years ago. That was always open. And when they did the project in Lengelstown to work on the lane, you know, to work on the roundabouts, you know, you needed to get down through there, and all the traffic had to go on the north alley. Because an individual that owns property there states that's his alley. And I have seen the old maps. It's on Google. Raspberry Lane was always an open lane. We traveled it all the time. And I would think that the historical map, somebody really needs to look that up, because if there is a crisis on that road, how are you gonna get the trucks down? Are you gonna go the whole way around? It makes no sense if someone can block a road. Safety is of paramount importance, and that's just, it's been a burden my saddle for a long time that they got, they still get away with that. It was always open, just because all the parcels we have in the township and everywhere, you know, it's an alley. We're gonna shut down half of a, you know, an alley off of Green Street in Harrisburg or something in subsequent township. We're shutting it down here. It's an alley. There's property, might be on both sides, but the alleys were created for the convenience of all the residents to have access to the back of their properties and the conveyance The one thing I wanted to talk about is still, as I go around the township, I'm still seeing more and more and more overhanging branches and stuff like Colonial Road, Lock Willow, Earl Drive, Goose Valley. And to whom is it incumbent upon? PennDOT, who's done nothing. Veolia, Verizon's done nothing on their right-of-way. So again, it's an ongoing issue, just to revisit it. We have a mower, and the mower was working on Goose Valley. People are throwing out hunks of wood. They're throwing their boulders out there. So I guess now we need a place to get rid of rocks. But the mower's damaged, they're gonna replace it. I talked with the director. It's an ongoing process. But I just don't think that most people are aware of the problems that some of the residents create. So is it the residents' issue? Do we mow that? Do we have to mow everything for them? You know, I think somebody has to figure out what their level of responsibility is, because ultimately, every single taxpayer is paying for the maintenance of these common I asked the other week, just the Woodcrest right-of-way. I was able to round up some neighbors and some young sons there. They had some good, strong guys, too. We want to go down into the area off Colonial across from Goose Valley and have at it with all the phenomenal amount of debris. You just don't see it, because, you know, you're gonna get killed looking over the guardrail. We want to come in, the township has a sewer department right-of-way. The right-of-way should be maintained. It's just a normal thing you would do, and that way Verizon can clean up their lines in there. But we just need a way in. And that's out of my hands. We'd obviously have to make arrangements with the homeowner, where that right-of-way, it has to enter. It was gonna be a road, go down into lots that were there planned out, but when Colonial Road in 1965, when they dumped the dirt, burned it up, made the highway, they became landlocked. But there is still is a right-of-way. As we move into the fall, the yard waste thing, we're the only municipality in the area just about that doesn't have some type of year-round yard waste. And as I've stated, and you know it's true, if people don't have a place to put their stuff, they're gonna put it somewhere else. We did dumpsters last year, they were 40-yarders or too tall. I mean, you'd have to be 8'10" to dump the stuff in there, and people were throwing it on the ground and throwing it over. So we need something. I talked with our waste provider in York, their supervisor at the dispatcher, and she stated that we really do need something in March, because they were overwhelmed the first week in April. I mean, everybody has it out, so, and you negotiate. A couple of times in March would be great. Maybe a time in December would be great, where we could take it out to the land waste. But again, we're gonna be, that's gonna be on us, and we're gonna be out of time to have a plan for it, if we don't plan now. That's about it. They did some digging on Goose Valley and Crestmont, and it goes up into Elbridge. I've asked, I talked with people about this. It still hasn't been repaved. We're back to the sewer department, not the sewer department, but they didn't do it. They have people that do it. And the way that they're infilling these, they're not following a compaction schedule that makes any sense to me or anybody else's. A gentleman does construction. They're not, it wouldn't be that bad. We can always, I was taught, we can always do better. And they can do a whole lot better in just their rough patching, but they still haven't come back, and it's brutal. It's like at, on McIntosh, between Seabiscuit and the creek there, there are two manhole covers. I hit that one today. You're going down through, somebody's on this side, here comes the bicycle, and you gotta get over, wham, into that hole. In the past, the people I worked with, if people can't fix it, you throw blacktop on it and you dig it up later. Because the roadway has to be smooth. Imagine an officer on a motorcycle. Imagine somebody responding in any kind of vehicle. That it is a thump, or I wouldn't mention it. It just hasn't been done in years. Whoever paved the road should have been held accountable to go out with the ring cutter, shim it, raise it up, and get it flush. And that's about it. I had a bunch of little notes here, but that Lengelstown Raspberry Lane is eating at me here as we started the meeting. We were blocked out from that during that whole process, and I kept thinking, what there's a fire, what there's a first responder needs to get through there? How can anybody block off, historically? And I know we have maps here, they might have them in the township. I tried to contact the courthouse. They're somewhere, not the courthouse, but the records, Mr. Zugay's office. And I didn't fare too well there. But I know the documentation is there, I think would prove us all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to chairman and board members' comments. Is there any comments from the board?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Miller, when we, Mr. Miller? When we get PennDOT in a room, we'll talk to them about these overhanging branches, and then...
I just, you know, coming upon the owner, but these are hanging out over the right-of-way along Colonial Road and, you know, the other Colonial, where the branches hang.
Yeah.
You know, the dirt moves down, it's blocking one, two feet of the blacktop, it's hitting into the burn, and this is where the branches, the logs have been laying for over a year. This is people that are riding their bicycles through there. That is the bike lane. That is the walking lane, especially that one spot where old Colonial hang these.
Tell you what, if you wouldn't mind sending me some pictures, that way I can show them when they're here.
Absolutely.
And then, also, when we were talking about the roundabouts, we're gonna work with Director Keshiva with ways to not only limit or find these truckers, we're gonna also try to recoup some cost for the damages occurred, too. So, you know, coming soon. Stay tuned.
Okay. Any other board member comments? No. Managers report, Mr. Vernell.
Thank you, Supervisor. I don't really have anything to report this week, but I will say, if Mr. Vostik wants to meet with me afterwards, I can tell you what was, I can give you a rundown on our budget presentation from earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Vernell. Moving on to old business. Action item 7A, to approve the application for payment number one for the Centennial Acres Park and Coal Memorial Park Court Improvements Project. This is an invoice submitted by SLC Excavating for the payment of the improvements at both of those parks. The payment is for bond insurance, benches, and then other improvements to the basketball and tennis courts. And the payment amount is $34,346.59. Anything else, Mr. Vernell?
That's it.
Yeah, so that pretty much sums up the first draw for the bond insurance and the improvement guarantees. Just noted for the meeting, Coal Park, there's going to be work on the tennis court, the handball court, and the basketball court. And Centennial would be the basketball court initially, and the court would be closed for construction with the construction entrance being off of Centennial. So it will be closed during the renovations at Centennial, but the Coal Park will remain open.
Thank you, Director Keshiva. May I have a motion to approve the application for the payment for the Centennial Acres Park and Coal Memorial Park Court Improvements?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment, discussion on this action item?
Pass the list.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
No.
Okay. Moving on to new business, it's an action to enact ordinance 2506 authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond series of 2025. I know we have a number of representatives here. Who would like to kick us off? Mr. Williard, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So I will go through the handout that's in front of you. First, we have the full team here, so let's go through some introductions quickly. So Zach Williard from PFM, we're the township's municipal advisor. With us is Lou Verdeli and Ryan Brockman from Raymond James, the township's underwriter. We have Jay Wanger from RBC Capital Markets, also the township's underwriter. And then we have Erica Wyble and Ryan Gonder from McNeet Wallace, the township's bond council. So together, we're the financing team. Real quickly, just to kind of, you know, high-level, before we jump into this, and I'll try to be fairly quick, because I know you have a busy agenda. But we were at the authority meeting last week. This is the continuation of a financing plan that's been going on for many years related to the sewer capital projects that you have before you. So this is kind of the next step in the financing plan. We've been working with Mr. Weaver over the past few months to put this together, and tonight you will have a vote. So I'm gonna go through the handout in front of you, which is the numbers part of it, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Erica and Ryan to talk about the actual ordinance that's in. All right? If you flip to page two, this is the interest rate chart that we show you every time we're here. The kind of the main message here is, you know, we hear a lot about, you know, high interest rates, whether you're looking at CNBC or listening to Bloomberg Money, and interest rates have been much higher than they have been for the past 15 years, right? Mortgage rates are, you know, can be in the 7%. But I just want to make the point that that's not where you borrow. You know, you borrow tax-exempt debt in the tax-exempt municipal market, okay? So the rates on tax-exempt bond issues right now, fixed rates, you know, range from 4.5 to the low 5% is kind of where something like a lower Paxton Township borrowing would be. So just to kind of give you that, you know, high-level overview, that's what we're talking about. On page three, there's a lot of bullets here. I'm gonna roll quickly through this. What's gonna be in front of you tonight is a vote for borrowing up to $5 million for the next phase of sewer capital projects. The resolution itself is actually gonna be for 7.8 million, okay? That's a not-to-exceed number. We have to have a much higher number in there. This is the way the township has done this in the past and the way that most municipalities borrow money. But you have a not-to-exceed number that's typically significantly higher than what you're gonna actually borrow. It builds the flexibility that we need for Erica and Ryan to then take this to the state and get approval before we price the bonds. So that's the difference between the two.
Mr. Williard, what document are you referring to?
The PFM handout. It should be in front of everybody, I think.
I just don't think, we don't have it loaded onto the computer. It wasn't sent to us earlier.
Oh, okay. It's the same one as last week. I apologize about that.
It's not on there.
We have extra copies for the public, in case you're interested. We'll give them to you after the meeting.
There's a few up there, and we can resend it to you. Okay, so we're on page three. Under bullet two, I just want to hit on that, the expenditure test. We always like to say this, this is not gonna be an issue. We've seen draw schedules and professional engineering estimates of how this money will be spent on the projects. But typically, when you borrow money, you want to make sure that you can spend 85% of that amount within three years. Okay? So again, not expected to be an issue. And then the bottom half is the parameters ordinance, which we discussed earlier, and that's what Erica and Ryan will touch on. On page number four, this is what we call the township's debt summary, okay? So the township borrows the money on behalf of the sewer authority because of your high credit rating, a AA2 credit rating. So that helps the authority get better interest rates on its debt, therefore keeping the rates as low as possible. So when we look at page four, this is the township's debt in, in whole, okay? Now, most of this debt, if you flip to the next page on page five, is actually allocated to the sewer fund, you know, well over 75% of it. So when we talk about, and we're working with Mr. Weaver on the, the debt plans for the sewer fund, when you look in column 11, you know, you pay about $10.2 million in annual debt service right now for all the sewer-related projects that you have. So that's kinda the column that we're focused on, column 11 there. When we talk about adding $5 million to the debt, it's gonna be going on top of what that column looks like. Any questions on the existing debt for the township or the sewer fund? So then, page six is really the main page of this. You've seen, you know, a number of versions of this over the past few years. So starting in column 11, prior to the issuance that was done in 2024, that was the existing debt service of the sewer fund, column 11. Then last year, the 2024 bonds were issued for sewer projects in the amount of $15.7 million. So that's kind of all that's happened. And so we're on column two, which is in the yellow in the red box, that is the expected 2025 $5 million piece of the new money projects. And in column 13, you can see that adds about $267,000 to the debt service run rate, okay? And then, that's the only thing that you're focused on tonight, but we have in here the rest of the plan, columns three through seven in the different colors. Now, those are likely to change around as projects change, as timing changes, those, those will not look the same, but that's kinda how this is laid out now for illustrative purposes. So basically, what it does is it walks you all the way to the right-hand side of the page in columns 20 and 21. So if the plan worked exactly as shown here, you'll end up in column 20, which is what would be the new debt service number that would be in the sewer fund budget, and it will fund it about $41 million worth of sewer projects over the next 10 years, okay? Again, I don't wanna get too focused on the next 10 years, really, we're just talking about column two, which is the 2025 issuance tonight, but we'd just like to kinda show you what the roadmap looks like as you plan forward. All right, so any questions about that? Yes, ma'am.
So I'm looking at column 11, existing sewer fund debt service versus column 12, actual debt service. Could you explain those?
Yeah. Nope, so good question. So, so column 11 is really meant to be the same as on page five, except it's all folded up into one column. So page five showed you all the different bond issues that you have, you know, going back to 2014, okay? So that column is meant to represent the existing debt that you already have. So if you do nothing going forward as far as borrowing money, you still have to pay back that column, okay? And then what's being shown in columns 12 and 13, column 12 is the actual debt service that was issued in 2024, and then column 13 is the expected debt service that we would issue over the next kinda 30 days. So then that would be your new total debt service for the sewer fund. Is that helpful?
It, it is. I'm the only one up here that does not sit on the sewer authority.
Sure.
You don't either?
I do not.
Okay. All right.
Well, what other questions can I help you answer on this page? There is a lot going on on this page, I realize that.
Well, so, as part of our agenda, we had a debt statement pursuant to section 8110, and is that loaded?
So I think all of the, the documents that are on there, they're all gonna be reviewed here shortly by McNeese Wallace.
Okay. Well, we won't really, I, we can get it up, but I was trying to understand the difference, all of our debt, all of our bonds show in the column labeled "non-electoral." Could you address that?
Which page are you referring to?
She's looking at the debt statement, Zach.
Okay, well, so, let me, I'm gonna do one more page, and then I'll bring Erica up, and she can walk through that, and I'll stand here if there's any other questions about the numbers handout.
And Zach, before you, you move on, can you just explain the difference between bank-qualified and non-bank-qualified, and, and what having a five-year call means to the township?
Yeah, so when you, so we're back on page six, the colorful page. When you look in columns one and two, the first issuance that was done in 2024, that was a $15 million issuance. And if you look down on the, the top part there under column one, it says "non-bank-qualified." The one that we're talking about this year's gonna be less than $10 million, it's a $5 million issuance. When you issue less than $10 million per calendar year, the bonds receive special treatment, which historically had a lower interest rate and a shorter call feature. The interest rates right now are similar to non-bank-qualified debt, but you still get the five-year call feature rather than an eight-to-10-year call feature. Why you care about that is it means that you can come back and refinance the debt, or pay it off, or restructure it after five years, rather than waiting eight to 10 years. So it's more advantageous from a call feature standpoint, it leaves the township more flexible should interest rates drop in the future, or should you have a windfall and you wanna pay off debt, or you need help with the sewer budget, it allows you to be flexible. So it's an important distinction between last year's issuance and this year's issuance.
Thanks, Zach.
Sure. So, so lastly, real quick, just on page seven, so this is the timeline, how we kind of expect things to play out here over the next couple weeks. So we're here tonight on September 2nd, you can consider the ordinance, if you should pass it, and then we would continue the process. The next things that have to happen are, we need to go to get a credit rating, okay? You have to do that each time you issue bonds. So you already have a credit rating, it's a AA2, which is a fantastic credit rating, okay? But we still need to go through that process again, then we'll prepare the offering documents, and then we expect to be able to lock in interest rates kinda early to mid-October. So that's kinda, that takes us to the finish line, and then you would have money in the bank approximately 30 days later on the timeline, it says mid-November.
When you say get a credit rating, what does that process look like?
So we put together a prospectus, that's all about the township and why we're issuing the debt. We send that off to Moody's Rating Agency. Then they're gonna come back with a list of questions, and then Mr. Vernell, we'll get on a phone call with him and the rating agency, and we will go through the questions, and it's kind of an interview to learn all about the township, you know, economic development, what the finances look like. You know, they know a lot of this because you were rated last year, so it's not like it's been five years since you've done a credit rating, but they want an update. And then, once you have that call, then a few days later, they'll issue the credit rating. We would expect it to hopefully stay the same at a AA2, again, which is, you know, which is great.
Does the fact that we had a, for lack of a better phrase, a good audit report help us?
Absolutely. They love to hear that. They're very focused on having cash reserves, so a lot of times, if you have a good audit, you build a reserve, that's what helps to, you know, have, preserve your AA2 rating and potentially, you know, be upgraded in the future. So that's usually what comes out in the audit, and they'll be very interested in, in the audit.
All right.
All righty.
And just in case anybody is wondering, Mr. Vernell and our interim finance director, Rick Grove, have both been through the bond issuance process numerous times, so they will help guide us through this rating agency process with PFM, with Raymond James, with RBC, as well as McNeese Wallace.
Yep, as Tom knows, it's a good time, so we'll, we'll get through it together. All right, so I'm gonna bring up Erica and/or Ryan, and I'll be here for questions as well.
Before we jump into the ordinance, I'm happy to answer some of your questions, Supervisor Thompson. So non-electoral debt is debt that has been approved and authorized by the board. And this type of debt is a unique type of non-electoral debt, it's what's known as subsidized debt. And that's because this debt is being issued pursuant to a subsidy agreement with the authority. So the township is issuing the debt, and then through a subsidy agreement, the authority is obligated to repay that debt service from the authority's receipts and revenues from that sewer system. What that means that's particularly good for the township is on your debt statement, which you can see up there, you can see portions of it up there, you actually get to exclude subsidized debt from your overall debt. So I think there was a chart in here that showed a total township debt of maybe 13 million, and 3 million of it was the actual debt service of the township. That's the difference of the debt that is subsidized, is that 10 million, which is being paid by the authority, and through the authority's receipts and revenues of that system, versus the 3 million, which is then being paid by the township. So does that help shed some light on the differences?
I, I heard you. My problem with this document and, is that there are no page numbers, so I, I can't turn to a page, so, just go ahead.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Ryan to go through the ordinance, and hopefully we could address some more of your comments through the, the ordinance as well.
Good evening, Ryan Gonder from McNeese Wallace and NERC. We have the ordinance pulled up here for everyone to review right now, it's ordinance 25-06. This one does have page numbers, hopefully it's a little bit easier to ask questions. Just a few points that I wanted to highlight for everyone tonight. It's, it's a maximum aggregate amount of $7.8 million. The idea is to come in at an amount less than that, but to give Zach and his team the flexibility to get the best rate and everything else, we have it at $7.8 million. And as, as mentioned, this was prepared in accordance with the Local Government Unit Debt Act, and it's been reviewed by the folks, your solicitor and, and your management team, and it's also been properly advertised and timely advertised, so that it can be voted on this evening. As mentioned by Erica, it's secured by the full faith, credit and taxing power of, of the authority, oh, sorry, of the township, but it, there's a subsidy agreement in place in which the authority agrees to make the payments on the bond. And then finally, the third whereas clause defines the project, which has already been discussed tonight, and the ordinance also authorizes McNeese to file all of these documents with the state and to complete any other necessary filings so that it can close on time. And with that being said, I'll entertain any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Gonder, Ms. Wyble? From the board? No questions? Okay. Are there any other presentations, Mr. Verdeli, Mr. Wanger? No? So I think we have it covered. Anything else from the board before we take action? Okay. The, the only thing that I'd like to mention is that this is not something new, I know we're a new board, and I know all of the actions that were taken are being scrutinized as well as they should be, but the township undertook bond issuances in 2014, 16, 19, 2020, three different series, 2022 and 2024. And we have to do this, we are under a consent decree with DEP to remove INI, that's infiltration and inflow, from our sewer system. So we're moving forward as outlined by the authority and requested by the authority, and we're acting in accordance with past practice. So with that, I would ask for a motion to enact this ordinance.
And Chair Kurtz, can we have that as a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. Shelley, that will be a roll call vote, but before doing that, I usually take a motion and a second. Is there a second?
Excuse, excuse me, sorry.
And then we'll ask for a public comment. Go ahead, Supervisor Thompson.
All right. I'm just looking down here at the, the, could you roll that up? Could you tell me what, I guess it's an acronym, CUSIP numbers, to be, what is that?
QCIP.
QCIP, stands for?
It's the Committee on Uniform Securities, it's Identification Program, I think?
Yep, that sounds right.
Okay, so I'm nodding no, so I'm sorry, so could you say it again?
I will email you. I, I think it's the Committee on Uniform Securities Identification Program, something like that.
I, I haven't heard-
Jay, are you, you know what it is, something like that. We all just say QCIP in the industry. It's basically an identification number that each bond gets.
All right.
It'll be on the corner normally of every bond.
It's the Committee on Uniform Securities Identification Procedures.
Procedures, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion, do we have a second? Was that you? Supervisor McCormick?
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Supervisor Najim. Shelley, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 The ordinance is enacted, thank you, everybody. We appreciate your time and for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine, and that is subdivision and land development, and we are on item 9A, which is the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for Gateway Lot 16, Plan Number 2007. Director Zerbi.
Yes, good evening. On June 3rd, 2020, the Board of Supervisors conditionally approved the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for Gateway Lot 16. The conditional approval included waiver request, administrative comments, and general comments as stated in the conditional approval letter. The plan was not recorded with Dolphin County Recorder of Deeds as required under the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code within the five years of the original approval. This plan comes before the board this evening to formally reaffirm the plan with the board. The date of this evening's meeting will be used to allow the plan to be recorded as required. The scope, intent, and design of the development remain unchanged and consistent with the original submission, and the applicant has provided a written request for the reaffirmation and is here to address any questions that the board may have regarding the plan.
Okay. Thank you, Director Zerbi. Mr. DeSanto, do you have any comments? Would you like to address the board?
Just a few. Mark DeSanto with Triple Crown Corporation. Amanda's given you the history, and quite simply, I believe, just during the peak of COVID, this kinda got overlooked by everyone. We did apply for building permits for the retaining wall, they were reviewed and approved by the township. The work's all been completed, HRG's been out there and has given, they've done the inspections on what they can, we've done core borings, approved the depth of the asphalt and things, so they've given a letter of, we're in good shape to record. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I really just think this was an oversight on our part, and as I said, the township even issued a building permit, and the plan wasn't recorded. It was just a simple mistake. So we're asking for the reaffirmation, be happy to answer any questions.
The building permit was issued for the retaining wall for the site work.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. DeSanto? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for Gateway Lot 16, Plan Number 2007?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment or discussion on the matter? Mr. Miller?
William Miller, 43, let me question you. I didn't see this come through the Greenway Committee. I'm just looking if there's gonna be, if there's not gonna be any sidewalks, or just gonna be walkways, straight wind farms, so people have an ability to get around the property, 'cause, you know, envisioning this, and eventually, this whole township's gonna be connected. There's gonna be walkways everywhere. I just wonder that in the grading process, there's gonna be some spot where it could be put in. Like PennDOT, they were gonna do out, out off of Union Deposit, out where they're doing all the work there, they're, the, the residents there know, even other 10-acre parcels, they're going to be able to, they're prepared that someone's gonna say, hey, we're gonna put in some kind of a walking area. To me, it's inevitable. I just wondered if there's any kind of walkway, 'cause you were so gracious at, you know, at Straight Wind Farms, and all those walkways. Just a thought.
This lot is an, was an existing lot of the Gateway Development off Route 22, so we front on a state highway where there's no sidewalk, but the shoulder there is like five or six feet wide.
could connect to, but that is not the circumstance or case here. Is there any other public comment or question on this item? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. Moving on to improvement guarantees, item 9B. Supervisor Thompson.
So we have four, one, two, three, four, five improvement guarantees are up for tonight. The Y subdivision is asking for an extension. The Raising Cane is also asking for an extension. Wilshire Estates is also asking for an extension. 5875 Avis Lane wants an extension, too. And F&amp;M Trust is requesting to be released. I've reviewed the memo detailing exactly what's going on with the various projects. As most of us know, Y is in the process of renovating, making that space larger. Raising Cane is almost done, so that project will be, I expect, probably will be closed out by, within the next two months. Wilshire Estates, let me look at the comment that I made on that one. Wilshire Estates is down from $200,000 to $3,000, so they're in the finishing stage right now. They just need the sidewalk completed, and 5875 Avis Lane only has some landscaping to be done. So I make a motion to approve the various releases and extensions on the improvement guarantees, and I'll need a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment, discussion, questions on the improvement guarantees? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last item is item number 10, the payment of bills for the Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority. Supervisor Thompson.
I make a motion, having reviewed the various questions that I had on a couple of the bills, I make a motion for the board to approve the payment of the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public question, comment on the payment of the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Any announcements?
So we had our budget meeting. We started with the planning department with Director Zerbi, and it was very well attended by the public. We had about 10 members of the public present. They asked very cogent questions. So our next budget meeting is on September 9th.
Right.
September 9th. That will be Parks and Rec, so you are once again invited to attend. We start at 5:30.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Mr. Vernau?
We, we do have several copies of the presentation that was handed out by PFM this evening that they were going through, that they referred to. They're up here on the dais if anybody would like to take one.
Thank you, Mr. Vernau. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.